Jessica Bonuel.
Libby Kent.
City Attorney.
Spencer Johnson, City Engineer.
Anna Reimer.
Jackie Hines.
In vocation.
Let's pray. God, we thank you to be able to gather in this place. We pray this season that we make good choices around lighting fires and being real careful out there during this dry season. We pray for, as spring break approaches and more students are out on the street, for safety. We also pray as we're growing into new things and expanding as a city that we make really good choices that will help us along the way and to future generations. We're thankful for the support of first responders and all of those who serve this city. We thank you for their service and for their families who support them while they're gone. Bless the conversations tonight and let it be to the glory of you and to the growing of this place. Amen.
Thanks, Kathy. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
All vote aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
All vote aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Wright County update, Wright County Commissioner Mike Catchmark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good to be with you tonight. Just a couple of updates, some specific to the county, some specific to cities. One thing is the meeting times and dates for the county board are the same for 2024 as they were last year. Same dates, times. The old building, we're in the process of a purchase agreement with the old government center in Buffalo. Hopefully that works out. We were able to cut the utilities last year because there was nobody interested in buying the building and reusing it, but with that, we're saving $10,000 a month since we were cutting, finally able to cut that. But we kept them on just to make sure nobody was going to be interested in the building and unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know how it's going to shake out, but either way, we're saving the $10,000. There's some legislative updates that Wright County and the board has been keeping track of that I want to share. I don't know if the city takes positions on these, but if you, as a city, or personally want to contact your legislators, if you're for or against or want to speak to them personally, I've been to some meetings where these senators and representatives want to hear from the constituents and not just cities and counties as a whole. But the state flag and seal, that was a proposed change. Wright County took a position to send a letter that we're opposed to that. We set the budget for $200 million to run the county last year and they sprung this change. Unknown cost to the county. We don't know what all the rules are going to be. We hear it could affect state offices only and not local, but I just got no support from constituents to go along with that in particular, and I took that to the board and that was what we did on that. The Minnesota Department of Revenue is exploring something to remove utilities, pipeline, railroad operation property tax and replace it with a gross operations tax. And we're opposing that also. What that could mean is that their property wouldn't be taxed necessarily on the benefit, but more of a general, generalized tax that could then lower their assessment, which then passes more expense paid by the taxpayer. So we're keeping an eye on that, too. Deadline for comment on that is April 9th. I don't know how that affects you with the railroad going through here. Then there's some proposed legislation to require a county, if you're over 100,000 people, to have a seven-person county board. And we oppose that. We think that that should be left up to the county to decide. We have five now. I know, speaking for myself, I lose enough votes four to one, that would just mean losing them six to one. But also the salaries that you take on with that, I just don't know how that would benefit Wright County, so we've taken that under consideration. The sanctuary state, we took a position, sent a letter that we were opposed to that. I won't go into the details if you're probably familiar with it already, but we can talk another time if you want to talk more about that. Then there's something that'll affect cities here if this passes, and I'm going to give you the House file and the Senate file number on this because it's called the Missing Middle Housing Bill. House File 4002, Senate File 3964. If this would pass, it would preempt local city land use authority and require residential density in many cities. And so we're taking a position to oppose that. Again, I don't know if your city takes, makes resolutions or letters like that, but we heard from some of the cities in my district, I heard from them that they were opposed because it takes that local control away and gives it to somebody else, so.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mike, but as far as that goes too, I know the League of Minnesota Cities has taken a stance against that bill as well, because like you said, it takes away the local aspect of being in charge of your housing density.
Right. So feel free to do your own thing or as a city, that's what I'm here to just bring up because there's literally thousands of bills and we can't keep track of them all. We're hearing from constituents that causes us to dig into it. So as you wish to do some of these, I don't know where they're at, you know, if the deadlines have come and went, but it's just something to think about if you choose to dig into that further. And that's all I have. Anyone have any questions? Just making my yearly round here with 13 cities and townships, that's about the only time I get unless you have a special request, but if I try and do two, that's 26 meetings and people are going to be left out. And I already hear from some thinking that I go to some more than others, but I try and keep track and be fair, but if there's a special item that I'm required or requested to be out to talk on, then I do that and then it's a little out of balance, but.
Are there any special projects that the county is working on that would affect your district more than others?
Well, I'm going to mention Highway 12 because of a Highway 12 coalition meeting the other day. It's still on the books for 2025 to improve Highway 12 through Montrose, Waverly, and Howard Lake, especially those bumps. If you're dragging a trailer behind like I do occasionally, you really feel it. So that's still on schedule and that's very specific to this area. Otherwise, not, I mean, to the district as a whole, there's a lot of ditch projects, but that's not going to affect the city of Montrose, but that affects a lot of what I do is ditches all over the place. But, uh, no, nothing really specific to my area more than others. The Donald Papers, the county paper this year, if you really want to keep up with things, you can read the county minutes, the fine print in the back that talks about what we're arguing about on a weekly basis. And then occasionally I put a column in three papers and that's got my contact information if you want to follow up on any of that. All right, thank you.
Hey, Mike?
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. I read a couple of weeks ago in the Wright County Journal Press about the homelessness in Wright County. What do you know on that?
Well, there is a, there is a homeless number. I don't know what the number is. There's, uh, there was some homeless right to shelter legislation. I don't know if that was connected to the sanctuary state or not, that would require Wright County to provide housing within 72 hours to anyone that claims to be homeless at the county's expense. I haven't heard much support for that. My phone isn't ringing for this, but Health and Human Services has got their own programs that they're working on to address that. They hear more about that than the commissioners, as far as I know, but every town, I think, if you talk to the right people, would say, yes, we have a concern for a certain number. But if you want me to check in any of it further, let me know and I can get back to you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Wright County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, how y'all doing? I don't know how to use a microphone, so I'm not going to use it. Deputy Brown, Sheriff's Office. It's your last month. Month of February is a little busier. Had just shy of 200 or 300 calls for service and cases. Had a DUI in the month of February. Not too much to talk about. Weather's getting nicer, so I'm going to be pushing a lot more traffic and tr- or traffic stops and everything in the neighborhoods, make the road safer for the kids playing. Yeah, anyone have any questions?
Since you brought up the traffic stops, I had brought this up to Lieutenant Workla too over the weekend, but I've been getting some concerns from residents about the Highway 12 and Highway 25 intersection specifically. You know, I know that you guys don't necessarily do DOT, but semis and cars constantly running the red lights there because they don't want to stop and wait the extra minute to minute and a half. And I mean, I've experienced, I'm sure everybody has of, you have to sit there and wait an extra second or two to make sure that nobody blows through the red light. So just hoping for maybe a little extra enforcement during some of those, you know, higher traffic flow times on Highway 12, just so we don't have any more bad accidents.
Absolutely. Definitely do that. I'll pass it on my counterpart in the other side of the shelves, too.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You guys take care.
Thank you.
Public hearing. So we are going to have a public hearing to consider the modification of Municipal Development District Number Four, the adoption of the modified development program relating thereto the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number Two, or Four Dash Two therein, and the adoption of a Tax Increment Finance Financing Plan relating thereto. So with that, I will make a motion to open the public hearing for the TIF District Four Dash Two, Number Four Dash Two.
I will second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in our public hearing, so do we want to go over it first? What is being discussed or public comment? Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Shannon Sweeney with David Brown Associates. In January, at the recommendation of the EDA, the city council called for this public hearing to receive public comment regarding the creation of a Housing Tax Increment Financing District. As authorized under state statute, a city can designate a portion of the community for the purpose of capturing new property taxes that occurs as a result of new development within the boundaries of that specified area. Those new property taxes can be used for a variety of purposes, but most often in a housing district. They're used to provide assistance to a housing developer in order to make the housing more affordable, and that's the case with this proposed project. Ultimately, that capture period can be for up to 26 years, which is a very long time. And with the housing district, essentially, you know, what we generally communicate to our communities is that those increments for the entire life of that district have to be captured and used for the purpose of affordable housing, or they need to be returned to the county and redistributed to each of the entities from which those taxes were collected. And so there's two actions ultimately that the council will be asked to consider following the public hearing. One is the adoption of the Tax Increment Plan, and that's a document that was provided to the county school district and the commissioner whose district the project is in. And ultimately, they had an opportunity to attend this public hearing and comment with regard to providing input on the capture of their property taxes. The document, the most important portions of the document are the budget and the area that we're designating. In this instance, it's the Preserve of Montrose Platte. That's where we're intending to capture tax increments from. That's where we're intending to perhaps invest increments, at least initially, in the proposed project. The other portion is the budget, and the budget was created to anticipate three phases of development and give you flexibility to use increments that could be captured through all three phases for not only purposes within this housing district, but potentially purposes outside of this housing district, so long as it was spent on creation of affordable housing that meets the eligibility requirements for the using of housing tax increments. Now, to be clear, the TIF plan doesn't obligate you to do anything with regard to funding a specific development. What it does do is it creates the mechanism for the capture of the revenue, but ultimately that obligation to spend those increments is created through development agreements or through projects that are directed by the city council. And so the second action that would be required, or required, that you will be considering is a resolution, or a motion authorizing the execution of a, an agreement that provides a specific subsidy for the Preserve of Montrose. That document is for the first phase or covers the first phase of the proposed project, which is 36 units. The developers indicated that they feel that they can construct 12 units per year in the preserve for a period of three years. And so ultimately, they have to complete that process in order to be eligible for the reimbursement of tax increments associated or collected from those 36 units that would be generated. In subsequent phases, they'd be required to come back to the city council to negotiate a new deal. If you're willing and if they need it, there'll be additional discussions that have to be had in order to either amend the existing development agreement or create a new development agreement that covers those subsequent phases. What we're, what the agreement covers at this point is the 36 units to be constructed over the course of three years. The reimbursement amount that, that is projected to generate is $2,053,043. And ultimately, that reflects collections and reimbursements that would occur over 24 years. During that 24 years, the developer would have to be in compliance with all the terms of the development agreement. The initial occupant of each owner occupied housing unit would have to be occupied by somebody that's met the income requirements, that's been certified to the city. If somebody is delinquent on their property taxes, if a lot is sold to somebody that's not required by, or that does not meet the requirements by income to be in the housing unit as a first occupant, we will not capture a tax increment and that money would not be reimbursed to the developer. We're only obligated to reimburse a portion of the revenue stream associated with the units that are being constructed that meet the eligibility requirements. With that, I'm happy to answer questions, but again, there's two actions. The first is the adoption by resolution of the Tax Increment Plan, which creates the mechanism for capturing taxes. And then the second would be consideration of a motion to execute the development contract with the developer in this instance. So happy to answer questions of the council or public.
Is there any questions for Mr. Shannon Sweeney? We'll let you know if any come up.
Yep. We have the representative from the developer, our plant is here as well, and so if you have questions of the developer, feel free to shoot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
At this time, looking to see if there's any public comment or questions, concerns about the TIF district possibility. I'll ask again, is there any public comment on the possibility of a TIF district in Montrose? Third and final ask, is there any public comment, questions or concerns regarding a TIF district in Montrose? Hearing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular council meeting.
I will second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
TIF plan. So is there any discussion on the TIF plan? It's a lot to take in, so.
Yeah, it is. The TIF plan draft was included in the packet for review. And then the resolution goes along with that TIF plan, and then the TIF agreement with the developer will be a separate motion. If you are considering approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the TIF plan, the draft plan.
That'll be to approve the resolution.
Over with the resolution 2024 dash 06.
I will second.
Further discussion? Is there any discussion regarding the TIF plan or the TIF district? Hearing none. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote aye. Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Anything else for that, Jess?
No. And then it would just be the TIF agreement with the developer, that was the lengthy contract in there that was written up by the city attorney. So if you have any questions about that, the city attorney is here as well.
No, I think the, I think the contract was what we asked for, what we knew was.
Yeah, everything looked good. I think it, you know, like I said, to keep the housing market in our own area low so we can get more people in, I think it's great. Hopefully, with the Brooks team, we can continue to do more.
I'll make a motion to approve the developer TIF agreement, the contract for private development between the city of Montrose and J.P. Brooks.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote aye. Ms. Otto? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, city council.
I had city council, special meeting, and a couple of park and rec meetings.
I did a couple of park and rec, city council, fish fry, celebrate Montrose. I met with the fire department and then today over at Carver Field.
Council, special council, meeting with contractors at Carver Field, and meeting with resident.
Council, special council, fire department, and went to the fish fry.
Fire department.
I got nothing.
Okay, any questions for the fire department?
I got nothing.
Nothing.
All right, planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council, we had our meeting on February 14th of this year. We had a public hearing on behalf of SJB Masonry for a conditional use permit and replat of location west of town here. They had a very good plan and after discussion, we approved that four zero. That's up for your attention. And we also had discussed the preserves at our last meeting and approved the original plat that they reverted back to. And any questions?
Thanks, Chuck.
Our meeting for March 13th has been canceled. Nothing on the docket.
Okay. SJB Masonry Conditional Use Permit and replat slash final plat.
Mayor and council, included in the packet tonight was a lot of information about the SJB Masonry project. I will go over the planning portion of it since Steve Gritman is not here, and then Spencer is here if there are any engineering questions about any of the comments for them. The applicant is seeking approval for a final plat and two conditional use permits related to an outdoor storage facility with gravel surface. The project would be located near the existing Excel Energy Building off of Clementa Avenue Southwest. The zoning district in question is currently zoned I-1 for light industrial, which allows contractor yards. The first conditional use permit request is for outdoor storage, which is only allowed by conditional use permit in that district. The second conditional use permit request is for allowing a gravel surface for the outdoor storage area instead of having to pave the surface. The applicant stated that since they would be driving large equipment and trucks on the surface, that a paved surface would easily be destroyed and thus is requesting the gravel surface. Mr. Gritman has noted in his report that the building itself complies with the requirements of the code. Planning and zoning did discuss this. As Mr. Smallwood mentioned, one concern that was brought forward by a member of that commission was the height of a proposed dry storage silo to be located on the property. Proposed height of the silo is 55 feet. The maximum occupied building height in this zoning district is 45 feet. However, as pointed out by Mr. Gritman, both the I-1 and I-2 districts have exceptions for electrical and mechanical equipment, so the 55 feet tall would be allowed. The applicant did offer two shorter silos as a solution during the planning and zoning meeting, but that would be up to city council to negotiate that deal with the applicant. It's important to note that the silo itself is not an aspect of the CUP and would be allowed on the site regardless of CUP requests. The majority of the planning commission concluded that the silo would not be considered to have a negative visual impact any more than agricultural silo or the city's water tower. Mr. Gritman did recommend approval of the CUP request and the final plat as long as all requirements set forth from the planner and engineer are followed by the applicant and that the applicant enters into an agreement with the city regarding the CUPs. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as mentioned by Mr. Smallwood, unanimously voted to approve the CUP request and the final plat contingent on comments from the planner and engineer staff.
I don't have any questions. I thought it, based on all the drawings and the designs, it looks really nice, so.
And the applicant is here this evening, so if he also has any questions, I know that we had talked the other day and there was still some, some things that we were discussing, so you're welcome to come up at that time, and if anybody has any questions about the engineering report.
Yeah, yeah, if you have anything for us, please do.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Just, did you have any questions on the proposed shop or what we're doing or anything that way or?
Looks like it's going to be a beautiful building, so.
That's what, that's what we're hoping for.
What exactly are you looking to do there?
So on, on the eastern half of the shop, we're actually looking to put pickleball courts in and make that open to the public. And then on the western half would be the shop and then the front porch portion that jets out would be the office portion. And we would just be looking for future expansion and that, that's why we're looking at that big of a building.
Is this helping bring any jobs or anything to Montrose?
So some of our, some of our employees live in the area. I, in fact, live just south of Waverly. And then there'll be, I have about 38 employees. Not all of them, not all of them come to the shop every day. They, most of them go straight to the job, but.
What is your current retention rate with your staff?
So as far as in the office, the field is a lot harder to retain. In the office, I don't know that we have a specific rate, but the newest office member started about three years ago, so.
So there could, there could be some potential to hire from within the city then.
Absolutely. We would be look, we're looking to. Absolutely. We, we would be look, we're looking to grow and expand. And so the whole reason for the silo is we're getting volumetric mixer trucks. Not sure if you're familiar with those. But basically, the truck stores everything on it to be able to make concrete and we'll drive it to the site, batch concrete there. And so this, this is a new business that we're adding to it. And then we've, we've also own a precast plant in Wilmer and, and we're in the process of getting that rolling too.
When are you looking to build?
ASAP.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the silo height goes, I have no issues on that end. I don't think that there needs to be two smaller ones. I think it just adds more cost to you.
Correct.
No, I, I mean, I agree.
Because it was stated, I'm just trying to, if anybody's got, believes in that, I just don't think that there's a need to restrict that.
No, it looks like a nice building. Looks big.
Well, we'll have to have you guys all out there when it opens up.
Absolutely.
We'll hold you to that.
Anything else for me or?
I don't think so.
Yeah, if there was no other objections to any of the requirements or any questions about that. The next step would be to approve resolution 2024-07. And that does also include the conditional use permit performance agreement. Right now that's sitting in draft state. We kind of have to go through that and fix it up and put all the correct information in there. That was just something Steve recommended that we use, that we do have an agreement with the, with the developer and that was his recommendation, so. If you guys are in agreement and pass the resolution, we will work on, on completing that draft.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-07. Resolution of the city council of the city of Montrose approving a final plat and conditional use permit for outdoor storage and servicing alternatives in the outdoor storage area in the Montrose Business Park Outlots B and D.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Parking rec.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. So for our new business, just a correction in the paperwork here. April 2nd, 5:30 is our next meeting, 5:30 PM at City Hall. We met with the principal of the Montrose Elementary, 20 Stefis. Just in regard, they got a bond measure for an ADA-approved play surface. So he was garnering interest in whether Parks and Rec, city and so on and so forth would be having any interest in kind of co-opting a plan together to make a kind of larger section of that playground ADA-approved. So right now we're waiting on more information. Sounds like he's kind of within his, like, within a good fundraising year. They're about at 10K. So either planning for the future or, you know, money coming directly from the city most likely not going to happen, but planning something for the future. Just kind of garnering support from the community to get something like an ADA surface and playground equipment approved at the elementary school. We're going to be, I'll be attending the Lions meeting, upcoming Lions meeting, just for kind of rehashing that partnership with Parks and Rec and Lions. We are going to be updating the brochure with a photo contest, so updating all the, so updating our Parks and Rec brochure, but having the community participate in photo contests, so our brochure can be actually filled with folks enjoying their parks in the community. We also have partnering with the Wright County for archery program. They're running it, so they're using the Rolling Meadows Regional Park. April 22nd through May 13th, 3:30 to 5:30, costs $5 for ages around nine to 13, just to learn archery, proper form and technique, that kind of thing. And then upcoming events, we have our Launceston Lagoon presentation on April 20th, 11 AM to 12 PM. Prairie Restoration will be there and we'll also have like a seed exchange, so learning about the Launceston Lagoon program, a grant through Bowser to get native plants in people's yards. And then we finalized our Parks and Rec surveys for recreational activities and we should be getting that out on Facebook here shortly. That's pretty much it.
Questions for Josh?
Nope.
Thank you.
Josh, if I remember correctly, he didn't have a, a number.
Correct. Yeah, Principal Stefis, Stefis?
Stefis.
Stefis, yeah. He didn't have a hard number. He was just kind of, just that beginning process of seeing, hey, if anyone, Parks and Rec is interested in, you know, fundraising, working with any, any, any means to get some extra funds into the school, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
City engineer?
There's a button on the side.
I have no updates unless council has questions.
We did get a quote back from formatting for the Parks and Rec trail plan. It was at over $4,000. So I'm going to see if we can, I can negotiate and cut down some meetings just to get a, hopefully a number under $4,000. Otherwise, I might just format it myself.
Thanks again, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Was there any questions for the engineer?
Thanks, Spencer.
Great.
Public works.
We had our meeting today at the ball field. Kirby was in attendance along with Eddie Colasza from the park board. They plan on moving forward some rehab there.
And Michelle.
And Michelle. Hopefully, starting, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday, it's all going to be compliant to weather, right, so. And hopefully by the end of the summer or July, August, we'll have a somewhat newer looking field going on there. I don't really have any updates on anything. If you guys got any questions for me?
Are we going to need to update community ed about having ball out there then?
I believe Christie already contacted them today.
Yeah, okay, Christie talked to them.
Yeah. And they didn't seem to have a problem with it and they said they welcome the new field hopefully next year, so.
So that'll probably take most of the summer.
We'll see, you know.
How far they got to dig down and?
Right. I mean, I'm hoping it's done by the end of June, but who knows? Because you're collaborating infield work, a cement guy and fence people, so.
The one thing that's going for us right now is that we've had an exceptionally great year so far for some of this stuff. I mean, the, the top turf guy had said this morning that he has been out to different locations all over the place already and he usually isn't doing that until April, so.
I'll be, I'll be interested to see what happens in April and May this year.
Wayne, we hope.
We'll get it snowed.
Always something.
Probably. Let it snow.
Any questions for Danny?
Thank you, that's all I got.
Thanks, Danny.
Did, are, are both your summer help guys coming back this year?
They said they are. That was two weeks ago. You never know, but I got a good feeling that they'll be back.
Just thought I'd ask.
Right.
And the compost is open, right?
Huh?
Compost, open?
Nope.
When are you opening?
I guess I don't know. I mean, we got to see how, it should be dried up in there, but we're going to open it up eventually and hopefully we don't have to hire somebody to man it. I mean, we chose not to man it, but we'll see along that last. I haven't really set up a date yet. I haven't had a lot of people calling on it yet, so. If it stays dry, fairly soon. So. And it will be posted on city's website and people will know when we open it.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
Old business preserve, second amendment to the purchase agreement.
Mayor and council included in the packet this evening was the second amendment or the purchase agreement for the preserve for J.P. Brooks. This is just so that we can continue to finish things as far as the TIF and getting some final approvals for their building and stuffs. They're in agreement with extending that, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the purchase agreement extending the date to May 31st, 2024.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All vote aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. New business, Quick Signs of Wilmer quote for digital sign.
Mayor and council included in the packet this evening is a quote for a digital sign that would be located out on Highway 12. The biggest that we can go is that first one that's listed, the 48 inches by 113 top sign and then 69 inches by 113 bottom sign. Between that and, and posts put that up, it'll be $62,143.
Spent out of the ARPA funds.
Spent out of ARPA funds, correct. Yep.
I think it'll be good and I liked the little picture you put in there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello. Dan, do you know what it's going to cost to like remove the current sign?
What's it cost to remove it?
Yeah. Why do you think it's rough?
It ain't going to cost us nothing to remove it. We'll get it out of there. What's it going to cost us to replace it?
To replace it.
North of town, I have no idea yet. If we don't wreck the poles taking it out, less. I have no idea, you know, what we're going to find, so. The sign has been repainted and is done. I mean, most of the work has been done there. I'm sure I'll be coming to council for that approval once I figure out where it's going. We might have to get Boulder Make involved with some shooting, some easements out there, things like that.
I, I have asked them to mark the easement at some point.
Right.
And then this will be able to be updated pretty much wherever we have a computer and internet access. It has a Verizon lifetime communication plan included in the sign itself, so.
Do we know when they can come to install?
I do not know that.
Well, I'd say we get this approved and then find that out. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a double-sided digital sign from Quick Signs of Wilmer for the total price of $62,143 from the ARPA funds.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Six Jays construction quote.
Mayor and council, the next item is the Six Jays construction quote for the flooring here in the community center. We did receive two quotes for that. The other one was within a couple hundred dollars, so they're very comparable quotes. There was a sample floating around somewhere that I brought tonight. So if you are agreeable with that and think it looks good, the color can be changed if you want, but.
I think it looks good. It's a little rough.
It's going to have another coat on it, so it'll be less rough.
David, come on.
That's just a sample, so. And then we are working on painting the community center as well, so it should look pretty nice.
I will make a motion to approve the new flooring for $38,183.25.
And this will be coming out of ARPA funds.
Coming out of the ARPA funds.
Isn't it $50,000?
It is. It's $50,000, 9/11. That's just, there's a deposit and then a balance, yep.
I will second.
Further discussion? All vote aye. Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Parking lot and sidewalk repair quotes for Montrose Community Center.
Continuing on with repairs for the community center, there's just some sidewalk and walkway replacements that need to be done and in conjunction with that, some parking lot repair will need to be done just by fixing the sidewalk area. The concrete work is $16,700 and the asphalt work is $4,500. And then $135 for pavement removal. And this would also be coming out of ARPA funds.
That's our, so what's our total cost on that?
Our current balance before this was $196,559.95. With approval of the three items tonight, those totaling costs are $134,254. Therefore, the ARPA balance after these will be $62,305.95. The two individual projects are $21,200 plus the $135 for removal. The $21,335 total.
I'll make a motion to approve the parking lot and sidewalk repair quotes to be paid for with the ARPA funds for $16,700 to Jordan Concrete and Construction and to the[1666.64][1668.00]$4,635 to Mid Minnesota Hot Mix for the parking lot repairs.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Just something I thought about when we were talking about that before we move on to the next item. We talk about ARPA funds a lot, but I just wanted to reiterate that that's money that the city got from the federal government for projects that are under a certain list. So it's not city money that we're using for these projects. It's money that we got from the federal government that have to be used for a certain purpose, so that's why we're using them the way that we are. So I just wanted to clarify that. Cleanup day discussion.
Mayor and council, cleanup day is coming up on May 4th from 8 to noon. The deputy treasurer was wondering if we're still going to do two free items.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, because it's kind of spending our money.
What, what was the total cost last year? Do we know?
I believe we usually budget $8,000 in that account, so it's usually right around that.
And then we just charge for pickup, correct?
Yeah.
If it's picked up.
Yep, and they pay for, yeah, like curb side pickup.
Yeah.
Or if they bring it on cleanup day, they just give them for free and hopefully they have other items.
Right.
That they're bringing as well.
I'll make a motion then to approve two free items per household.
I will second that motion.
Further discussion? Do we not have a line item in the budget for this? I thought we did.
For Cleanup Day?
Yeah.
So we closed out the garbage fund a few years ago because of Randy's Republic. We do budget money for it, but we also have to pay for disposal, and there's other costs and things, so we do budget for this specifically, yes.
Any other discussion? Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote aye. Motion passes four zero. ABDO Financial Services.
Mayor and Council, the current contract we have for financial services assistance with ABDO has expired, and if we want to be able to help the new City Clerk Treasurer, if she needs any assistance from them while she's in her first year still here, we've only had to renew that. I wasn't sure if you could read the hourly rates in there. They didn't copy very well. So the partner level makes $480 an hour. A senior manager makes $350 an hour. A manager is $290 an hour. Senior associate is 225 to 240, and associate and accounting specialist is 180 to 225. I guess these are other hourly rates. That's not what they're making. That's not what I meant. We usually, it's usually around that associate accounting level that we deal with, and it hasn't been too much since Ms. Heinz started, but I do want to have that assistance available for her if needed.
I was going to ask, did we utilize that a lot last, in the last year?
We used it a lot with the previous clerk.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is something good to have, just in case. I know they did a lot with Michael to get the yearly budget done, so.
And they helped a lot with the CIP plan and with lots of stuff, so.
Do you know how much we did spend last year?
You'd have to look that up, yeah.
Well, it's always good to have backup.
So what are you looking for here?
Just a motion to approve a contract renewal.
I will make a motion to approve the contract renewal with ABDO.
I will second.
Further discussion? All vote aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Discussion regarding Wright County Joint Powers Agreement.
Mayor and Council, we have an attorney from Kennedy and Graven here this evening to discuss this with you. I know some of you have some questions, and would just like to discuss the JPA in general, so that's what we're putting on the agenda for tonight, so feel free to ask questions if you want Katner to go over this. She's more than happy to go over this, and then we can have a discussion.
I reached out to somebody from the Wright County Attorney's Office last week and had all my questions answered, so. They said they are basically basing this off of what they do with tobacco. And since they handle all the licensing and all of the inspections and everything for tobacco, that's what they want to do with cannabis, and the county's only going to allow a certain number of, I think it's basically one per city that they're going to allow in the county. And, you know, in theory, Albertville could say they want 12 of them and take all of the county's designated cannabis stores. Not saying they're going to, so let's not print that. But they basically one per city, and there's only one per every 12,500 residents based in the statute that was passed.
So this would just basically be in addition to our existing contract with them?
Yeah, this just gives them the, you know, the enforcement and regulation.
Explicit, right.
Just like with tobacco, so. I don't think we have the means or the resources to be doing enforcement of a store like this if it were to come into town.
Correct.
Mayor and Council, I would just add, there is still plenty of administrative rules still come out from legislature, and so I don't think there's a rush to sign the Joint Powers Agreement at this point. It looks like at this time, only townships have signed on, no cities. And one kind of slightly different thing about tobacco is if the city doesn't enforce tobacco regulations, the county is required to. In this case, the county needs the city's consent to enforce these, so they're looking for the city's consent to enforce these. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to walk through kind of the different things that this Joint Powers Agreement would take away from the city's regulatory and enforcement powers and what the city would retain as well, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So under the Minnesota statute related to cannabis, currently, cities have these following obligations and requirements that would go to the county under the Joint Powers Agreement as it's drafted. Keeping and reviewing registrations of licensed cannabis businesses, collect and keeping licensing fees, enforcing licensing regulations, and limiting the number of cannabis businesses. However, even if the JPA was in place, the city would still be able to establish zoning buffers, so, you know, say around a school or a park. And the city would also be allowed to keep the state aid that they receive from the sales tax on cannabis, so. The other option too, if you guys, if you want to think about it, is we can certainly consider amendments to the JPA as well if there are certain things, like you really, you want them to handle enforcement, but you are really passionate about limiting the number of businesses in the city, we can add something, you know, along with that language to it. It doesn't have to be a just-take-it-as-it-is document.
I believe they were looking for any comments if we had that at this time before they kind of finalize this with cities and start having people sign on.
I'm all good with having the county take care of everything. We don't need to do, yeah.
When did they say they're going to be working on the finalized?
I know that when I talked to, I believe it was Sam from Kennedy and Graven last week, or maybe Joe, they said that the county was looking for comments and that if we had any comments, we should talk about this at this meeting so that we can make those comments before, I think their deadline is sometime in March, and then they'll be discussing it again. Now would be the time to speak up if we have comments.
I'm fine with what's in there after the conversations that I had, so. If we want to have the power of dealing with all of this, it's ours to have, otherwise, we can give it up to the county, so.
I got no issue.
Is this going to be the same as, like, you talked about the same as tobacco? So like, you can't smoke tobacco or cigarettes in public parks. Is this going to be the same?
Yes, yeah, and that was part of the statute that they, when they passed it last year, is there not supposed to be any public use, you know, public parks and spaces.
Yeah, Wright County passed something, and it passes down to us.
It does, yeah, okay.
It applies to us as well.
Got to get rid of the disco.
If there's no other discussion on that, then...
I'm not sure anything is...
We will move on then. I have no open forum requests. Upcoming meetings, Planning and Zoning canceled their meeting for this Wednesday. EDA Tuesday, March 19th, 12:00 PM, Montrose City Hall. Park and Rec Tuesday, April 2nd, 5:30 PM, Montrose City Hall. The next regular City Council meeting is Monday, April 8th, 7:00 PM, Montrose Community Center, and the City Council Workshop Monday, April 29th at 4:00 PM at Montrose City Hall. And that'll be the one we talk with Lieutenant Work as well. So acknowledgements, recognitions, or announcements?
I would actually like to acknowledge a lot of the work being done by Kim Niska. I see it all the time, you know, the community meals and the food donations. I really appreciate what she gives back to this town.
I want to acknowledge and celebrate Montrose with their fish fry. We have another one coming up on the 22nd of March. Josh was also there with Park and Rec information, so I want to thank him for that. And then David and his wife were coming on out too and supporting.
And I just wanted to put a reminder in here too that May 4th Cleanup Day, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. We're adjourned.
We were all panicking.